Now, are you asking permission to speak? Because the sign up sheet is over and the 30-minute allotment time is over. So you're requesting an opportunity to speak?
Yes.
Okay, three minutes.
One and a half.
Oh, one and a half, that's better.
Okay. Cassandra Burke, 117 Rondell Drive. And I'm not here to talk about that subject. I'm here to talk about the communication that was sent to you in reference to Resolution 166 of 2017 regarding the speed humps for Rondell Gardens and Colonial Gardens. Communication was sent to you from Kathy Maloney, interim executive director at KHA, requesting that the matter go back to committee for the consideration that the city agreed to pay for the cost of the speed humps and the installation. And I support that request and I ask you to consider doing so and I ask you to really consider what the request really is, right?
Well, I think it's in committee, but it's been in committee and there was a question of who's paying for it.
Right. So the agenda packet for this month said that, requested that it go back to committee.
Right.
So it's there now.
Right.
Okay, so please pay for the speed humps.
But there was not a figure either, so it's hard to pay for some if you don't tell us how much it's gonna be.
There's a figure in the communication, it said less than $7,500.
Okay, because I haven't seen that.
And I hate to equivocate, right?
Is this is all of them or just the one?
Singles are important and lots of other things are important.
Is this all of the housing units or just the one?
You're really chatty tonight.
Well, I just, you know, you're speaking, so I'd like everybody to know.
Yeah, yeah. It's for three for Colonial Gardens and three for Rondell Gardens.
Okay.
Okay. And so I furnished you guys with a copy of common counsel.
All right, I got it now.
Ladies, too. Yes, with a copy of a petition that I had gone around and asked people to sign, you know, if people supported the speed humps or wanted the speed humps and every single resident of Rondell Gardens and the family apartments signed that petition, save one because she didn't like the ones at Joy's Lane, full disclosure. But everybody signed it. This is something that's important to everybody that lives there. These are, you know, children. Both apartment complexes have lots of families with children and they're both very close to schools where there's the high volume of traffic of kids.
Okay, I just want to ask you one more question.
Okay.
Are these speed humps or speed bumps?
They are removable speed humps.
Removable, okay.
And they will be on the, on the street from April to November.
Okay.
Right. And they're not, it's not, it's not a huge price tag to save the lives of children. All right. And I also, just one more thing, I will add my support to the entire room in saying that I think that you guys probably know that you haven't had enough time to consider this legislation. Also, I've been coming around for a little while now and this is not even how you normally do things. Like you don't normally have, produce, you know, have a public hearing when you don't have a finished product. So you either have a finished product and you're not going to go back and make any substantial, you know, substantial changes, which is probably improbable at this time because everybody is not really on board with that, or you are requesting public comment when you are going to make substantial changes, in which case the public hearing would be premature. So I agree with everybody else in this room that you should send it back to committee. Thanks.
Okay, I now declare the public speaking portion of this meeting closed. We now enter into claims and communications. Hearing no discussion, they'll be on file in the clerk's office, anyone wishes to address them. Taking a motion, Spence with the second meeting of the general bills and pay same.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are paid, nine zero. We now go to report of committees.
Resolution 101 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York recommending modifications to the 2018 city clerk's budget.
On the question, hearing no discussion, oh, Alderman Coop.
Just for clarification, this is a $10,000 sum which was approved last year for roof repairs at the volunteer fireman's museum. For whatever reason, it did not happen, the monies were put back into the contingency. This resolution allows us to pull this money out of the contingency and make the repairs to this beautiful facility that we have in Uptown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 102.
Resolution number 102 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 fire department budget.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 103.
Resolution number 103 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 public works budget.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 104.
Resolution number 104 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing acceptance of the donation of MetLife Park, AKA Barman Park, by Prospect and Green LLC to the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 105.
Resolution number 105 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York requesting the city of Kingston to seek proposals for the vacant dock space east of Hideaway Marina on the Rondell waterfront.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 106.
Resolution number 106 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York approving the fiscal year 2018 community development block grant annual action plan.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 107.
Resolution number 107 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York establishing a public hearing regarding the possible merger of the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission and the Heritage Area Commission.
On the question, Alderman Childress.
I believe the night's where Alderman wants to make a motion on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, I'll yield to her.
Yield to her. Got your hand up? Alderman Schott.
I believe we do not have a piece of legislation before us that the council stands behind. I think it's because we just have not had enough time. I believe this is also true for the laws and rules committee. We have heard experts here tonight and who've reached out to us individually who want to have a voice in this. I appreciate the aldermen who want to have the public hearing to learn more, but us referring this back to committee, we do not lose the public hearing. We just gain a little extra time to hear from the experts and to make sure that this is what we want to send out to the public, that we can stand behind this. And so I would like to make a motion to refer this back to committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
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 Okay, on the question to refer back, Alderman Carey.
Yeah, I, I support Alderman Schott's recommendation. I think this is a very, very important issue for the future of our great city. We need to help smooth the path to development so people who can create jobs can do so more easily move here. I think that's, that's part A. But equally crucial is having the ability to preserve our history and maintain a more unified look to keep Kingston, Kingston's heritage on the forefront at all times as well. This is, as one of the speakers earlier mentioned, this is generational legislation. Given that, I believe we have to get it right rather than get it right now. We have tremendous human resources to make this happen. By waiting a month, we are getting public input in a reasonable amount of time anyway and we also are getting more time to address some of the concerns that we already know about. I'd feel more comfortable releasing to the public a document we have had thoroughly participated in more than we have up to this point. Some of the fears and concerns the public may have may be able to be addressed in the next couple of weeks as well. So I think I fully support sending this back to committee as well. Thank you.
Alderman Childress.
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I'd like to do is point out that Dan Gartenstein is not an elected member of this common council. There seems to be a lot of concern about some of his statements. None of us in the common council is operating according to his directions, his plans or what have you. He is an advisor to us, we appreciate his advice, but we take it in our own decision-making I'm also a little bit worried, given what folks have been saying tonight, because largely the proposal is a combination of the two proposals that are out there with some things added and one or two things probably dropped. Those are important things for us to look at, but if folks are concerned that this new proposal has so many problems, that means that our current standards and rules also have lots of problems. That says to me that this is something we need to be working on, that we need to get this accomplished and we need to do it in a quick fashion. I'd like to point out that I'm a historian by trade. I believe that it's vital that we preserve our past as this is our heritage, it's a crucial way of defining our community. So no one here is talking about reducing our commitment to historic preservation. The question is, how do we do it in such a way that we not only make it easy for folks to come before their commissions and get through the process, but also that we get everyone on board with doing it? And my concern is that the way we do it now is causing lots of people to not take part and to turn away and do work without being involved in the process. As an alderman, I believe that it's really important for us to listen to constituents, to listen to everybody. And I'd like to point out that this is exactly what's been going on since this proposal came before us a month and a half ago. We have been talking to lots of people, we have been listening to lots of people, lots of people have come out to talk to us. And I believe that having a public forum where everybody can get together and let their opinions be known would be a vital next step. We don't have to hurry the process, we can go back to committee after that, we can have another public hearing if we decide it's absolutely essential. We may do that, we have that power. We want to operate in a way that makes sure that everything we do is above board. Our current preservation is clearly old, our preservation process is old. I'm in favor of developing a proposal that streamlines the process where feasible, but also ensures that we have best practices in what we do. There's multiple ways to get to that, and that's what I would like to explore first in a public forum, and that's why I'd be against the resolution to send this back to committee. Thank you.
On the question, Alderman Davis.
Yesterday was a great discussion in caucus. Since May 30th, I alone have received up to 10 communications regard to this resolution, and I'm not even on laws and rules. Yesterday, after caucus, within 24 hours, I had received four communications in regard to this resolution. Now, as I get those resolutions, I get those phone calls, I'm listening to them, I'm reading them. To me, that is a public comment, period. So as a key member today, I was seeing, why not allow any and all of the public to comment on this? If certain parties are commenting on it, why not allow the public to have a comment, period, on it? That's how I would stand here. But as I listened to the people talk today, and I listened to the chairman of this committee today and yesterday, who, from my understanding, is stating that it was not enough time to really reflect on this resolution. That was the, that was the concern I had yesterday. Why was this even brought to us if it wasn't ready to be brought to us? So as I go back and forth here last night and this morning, and really right up until now, my decision is going to be to refer this back. And we have two of the three aldermen that are on this board, and one is Chairman Carey. And if he didn't feel, if he doesn't still feel confident about it, and he still has questions about it, then I would suggest that it be referred back so that they have time to vet these questions and these concerns with everybody's input, not just the HLPC, not just the HAC, but they open it up and allow everybody to have comments, the general public. And then I would be more, I can't even think of the word right now, more...
Confident?
Confident, thank you, confident that this resolution is something that they've had time to discuss and then brought forward to us. Now, is it going to be a perfect resolution document? Probably not, right? There's still going to be questions. Somebody's still not going to be happy, somebody's going to want to make some changes. But as we were notified yesterday, we could still have a public comment, period. It is not like we have to have a public comment the next month after this goes back to, is referred back to laws and rules. Laws and rules can talk and decide about it for months before they decide that they want the public comment, period. So my decision is going to be to refer it back to committee. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Alderman Worthington and Alderman Coop.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to piggyback off of Alderman, Schott, Davis, and Carey, I too will be in favor in sending this legislation back to committee for review. Yesterday at caucus, we spent a considerable amount of time discussing this legislation. At that time, unfortunately, I indicated that I was not well-versed in this legislation. And listening to the public comments tonight, I see that there are many others that have a lot of questions and concerns. I think that we should take the public's comments into consideration. I also think that because we have experts on both of these boards, anything that we are unclear about, we should invite our experts in to give us more and so that we can be knowledgeable and understand what is going on with this. So with that said, my decision will be in favor to send it back to committee.
Alderman Coop.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make two points. One is I definitely feel this resolution needs to be, to come back to the laws and rules committee, and I am a member of the laws and rules committee, and I have many things that I do not understand about this. So I don't, I don't think it's ready to come up for vote. I really think it should come back to the laws and rules committee for an informed discussion. However, where I differ with my colleague Alderman Schott's suggestion we bring it back now, I would like this to be preceded by a public hearing which would enrich the discussion once we bring it back to laws and rules committee, because I think we're all, as a group, kind of insular, we don't, there's so much we don't know. And I don't think we'll have, the discussion would not be as intelligent as it could be. So I would like to have a public, and so many of the things that were presented tonight in essence was like a mini public hearing, and in fact, so many of you had some very good testimonies of what I would hope that you would send that to us. Some of these things I would like to read, it's so hard to absorb everything that's being said with acoustics here and so on and so forth, I would like to read it. But that being said, I suggest that we go on, go forward with the public hearing, bring it back to the committee for an informed discussion, which will be enriched, and then we can go ahead, there's nothing to prevent us from having another public hearing. We are not under the pressure of time, I don't believe, there's nothing that says we have to do this lickety-split. I want to do it, I want to do it right so that, as one of my colleagues said, that, you know, generations from now it can be said that we did the right thing. So therefore, I am inclined to not, not support the amendment that's been offered. Thank you.
Anyone else, Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had some lengthy discussions last night, again tonight, and I think, I may have said this last night, I'm reminded of the old phrase, the cart before the horse. I guess it all depends on which, which is the cart and which is the horse from your, from your perspective. I'm going to, I remain convinced that the public should be intimately involved in this project, and I can't think of one public hearing that we have had that I haven't walked out of here learning a lot, a lot. Sometimes it changes my opinion of things. Last night, I certainly was of the opinion, you know, we should get it out there for people to talk about. I still am convinced that. However, I felt, as Tony would say, a lack of confidence in the room last night, that everybody really felt strongly about the way we're headed, there was a little trepidation I felt in the room, I didn't feel everybody was on the same page with this. I would like to see us all on the same page before we put it out there to the public. So at the risk of flip-flopping, I will support sending this back to committee. I don't think that prevents us from having public opinion, we can have public opinion at our meetings, we can have a schedule of a public hearing whenever somebody brings it up. You know, I, and again, as several people have said here, I don't think time is of the essence here. You know, I think we owe it to ourselves and to the public to take our time, get some answers, make sure everybody is together on this, and invite the public to be in on the ground floor of this.
Anyone else before I call for the vote? Alderman O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Historic preservation of the city of Kingston is probably one of the most important things we can do to this town economically, for our tourist industry. We need to take a good look at this. We should take it back, we should all take a good, hard look at this, we should do our research, and then bring it out to the public. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Alderman Morell, I was wondering if you're going to enter into this.
I support sending this back to committee. When we voted at the laws and rules committee, we were on, I was at least under the impression that this needed to be done with a deadline so that they could get a budget. It was brought up last night that that is not a consideration anymore, and as an art historian, art and architecture historian by trade, I admit that I don't know enough about what needs to go into a preservation document, and I would like to send it back so that we can draft, we can create a second draft that includes the expertise that we have in our city.
Thank you. Alderman Childress.
I would just like to stress that none of us is proposing in any way to dilute our commitment to historic preservation. The question here tonight is merely, how do we go about getting the best information? How do we go about including the community in a substantive way? Some of us believe that going to a public hearing would be important because that would allow lots of people to be involved at an early stage in the process. That would also be important because we would have experts there who would be speaking, and some people who might have opinions about these two commissions would be there and would be able to take advantage of those expert opinions. Without that, it becomes more us talking to experts, creating a plan, and then theoretically having it close to perfection, we go to the public. To me, that seems a little bit backwards. But I just want to stress, none of us is talking about diluting our commitment to historic preservation. We all understand that that's crucial to Kingston's future, both economically and culturally. The only question here is about how we go about doing that, whether we spend a month with this back in committee, or we go to a public hearing and allow people throughout the community to discuss it in that forum. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Alderman Coop.
Again, I'd like to just clarify, I absolutely agree, this should come back to laws and rules committee for an informed discussion. Again, I would just like to precede it by a more general discussion of people more knowledgeable than we are, that we bring it back to our committee, that we can always have the option to bring it back to another public hearing. So I absolutely support bringing this, I want to make that clear. It should come back to laws and rules. My, my only difference is the process by which, the route by which we do that. Thank you.
Alderman Schott.
I believe that if we send this back, or send this to public hearing now, then we are making the public do more legwork when we could, we have questions that we could answer before we send it, we could give the public a better document, we could still talk to experts, we could still talk to the public, which we have in getting.
Okay, anyone else before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, this is a vote to refer back. All in favor to refer back? Can you raise your hands, please, just so I can see? Just to refer, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. To not refer back, two. The vote to refer back is adopted, seven, two. Now move on to resolution number 108.
Resolution number 108 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, amending zoned parking on Hasbrook Avenue.
On the question, Alderman Schott.
First of all, I'd just like to thank the Public Safety Committee led by Alderman Chabot for carefully deciding on this and not rushing to come to conclude a solution. We listened to both neighbors to make sure that everybody was happy, which they are with. I also just wanted to make clear, because as I was leaving for City Hall this evening, I did get information back because we had questions about the stop sign placement and where everything is. Everything is in accordance, the stop sign is further back because of underground utilities at the corner. It is an allowed distance from the corner with sufficient sightline for the intersection, and there is no problem with the placement of what is now the loading zone, what we are voting to make into a 30-minute parking. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 109.
Resolution number 109 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, appointing commissioners of deeds from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2020.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Now we move on to first reading of proposed local law number four, no action is required.
Proposed local law four of 2018, a local law of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending local law three of 2016 regarding the sustainable energy loan program.
That concludes the committees for this evening. Alderman Childress.
Mr. President, I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Jay Wink, father of Sarah Wink who lives in the third ward of Kingston. Mr. Wink had a long and illustrious career. He was a Woodstock Councilman for a long time, a World War II vet, and later a member of Veterans for Peace. No one had more of a commitment to civic engagement than Jay Wink. Jay Wink took stands that he thought long and hard about and felt very deeply about. You may know him as a longtime protester at the U.S. recruiting station in Kings Valley Mall. You may disagree with his stand, but I think everyone can admit that he was a true American who stood up for his own individual sense of what was right and who was ready to put his time and energy into his beliefs. I think he was a model of civic engagement and he will be dearly and sorely missed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting, which is July... meeting, which is July... It's not the first Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday of July, okay?
July 10.
It'll be July the 10th.
July 10.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Well, the fourth is a Wednesday, so...
That would be the 10th.
It'll be the July 10th. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We hereby stand adjourned until July, whatever it was, 10th.